Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. Today is March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. It is seven P M. And we are having our regularly scheduled meeting via Zoom. We have before us approval of the agenda, approval of the minutes of March first, public comment. There was a public hearing for an amendment to subdivision regulations twelve point eight utilities. Then we have two new applications. First one is Arundel's keep map nineteen lot eight, an amendment to the approved subdivision. And item number two, Arundel Racket Center map thirty-six lot eighteen in the D B one, D B two district conditional use sketch plan. After that, we'll, the town planner has a report for us on the street design and ordinance amendment. Then we'll go home. Oh, there's.
We're already home, aren't we?
I'll start with a roll call. We have Marty Kane, Paul Green, Susan Sinnet. Susan Roth, Tom McGinn, I'm Rich. And I think that covers all of the planning board members. So those of you that are in favor, well, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Okay. Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Paul Green to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, Susan Roth.
Aye.
Susan Sinnet.
Aye.
Paul Green.
Aye.
Tom McGinn.
Aye.
Marty. Marty Wave, you're muted, so just wait. Thank you. It is unanimous. Approval of the agenda, approval of the minutes from March first, two thousand twenty-two. You have them before you.
My unmuted now.
Yes, you are, Marty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion the minutes be approved as written.
Second.
Motion made by Paul Green, seconded by Marty Kane. And any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor. Marty?
Yay.
Paul?
Aye.
Susan Roth?
Aye.
Susan Sinnet?
Aye.
Tom?
I have to abstain. I wasn't present.
Okay, we have one, two, three, four, four, five in favor, one abstention. On to the next item, public comment. This is the time in the meeting when if someone from the public has, has a comment to make about something that is not on the agenda. If you've got things that you'd like us to work on in the future, or comments about things that pretty much anything, as long as it's not on the agenda. And if you do, please raise your hand. And not seeing any hands go up, we will move on to the public hearing. The public hearing is an amendment to the subdivision regulation twelve point eight utilities. Currently, it says utilities serving lots with a street frontage of one hundred and twenty-five feet or less shall be installed underground. The board may approve overhead utilities when the applicant proposes reserved affordable housing and provides evidence that the increased cost of underground utilities will raise the cost of the housing beyond the targets for affordable housing in the comprehensive plan. So as amended on September twenty-seventh, nineteen ninety-eight, and again on June fourteenth, two thousand one. The proposed wording says the utility serving lots within a proposed subdivision shall be installed underground. Does any, are there any members of the public that would like to comment on the amendment? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. And we will move on to the first application, which is a new, a Rundle's keep an amendment to the approved subdivision, plan amendment to clarify the conservation language on the record plan, removal of duplicate conservation easements within the open space portions of the parcel and amendment of language related to the easement and open space parcel, which is to be conveyed to the Arundel Conservation Trust. Jason, now you are up in the corner. Would you like to address this issue?
Sure, Richard. Thanks for having me. Jason Vafias with Atlantic Resource Consultants here representing Rendles Keep LLC at the behest actually of the Arundel Conservation Trust. So if you recall, this project was before you, I think, five or six months ago. We are deeding the open space to the Arundel Conservation Trust. And during the reviews of the language on the recording plan, we noticed that there was some language that we probably should have cleaned up. I think the first go around, it just kind of got missed through legal review and things like that. And actually, if I can share my screen, I'll show you exactly what we're talking about. Rich, can you enable screen sharing?
Should be good for it now.
So you'll remember, so we have this fifty foot, if you can follow me, I'll switch to the little hand here, the hamburger helper. We have this fifty foot no cut zone other than for shared driveways along the frontage of the property. In the previous plan, this actually extended all the way through the open space. And the trust was worried that that would prevent them from actually cutting like a trailhead through here or other sort of work. And the no cut buffer was really, I think, for residential development. We were trying to keep that stand of trees deep, deep in front of a house lot. So we're actually here to take that because it was really a redundant buffer. I mean, if the land trust is taking the land, I think that we all generally agree that they're not there to harvest timber or anything. And they're not going to be creating, you know, open lawn parks or anything like that. These are going to be passive use, walking trails and things of that nature. So we removed that easement off of the open space, knowing that the open space was being deeded to the Conservation Trust, excuse me if I'm saying land trust. So that's basically the bulk of the change. We did change a couple of wording items in the open space, I think we called it. We just, we call it recreation space. So if you see right here, because the, the, the goal is, is to have a series of trails, passive use, low impact trails going out here. And, and I'll just remind you all, when you, you get the next project that we're working on in, they're gonna actually get an extension, another ten acres to that open space through the Randrick Trust project that we got ready to come back in for final. So that's basically it. Have any questions on it? More than happy to ask, answer. Joan Hall is actually here from the Conservation Trust. So if there are any more specific questions that I can't answer, I'll kick it over to her.
Yeah, I got a question.
Yeah, Marty.
Who's gonna be making the trails?
Volunteers. For the most, you have all our trails so far anyway have all been but with volunteers except for the pump track. So that's what we envision.
Okay, I didn't know if the, the homeowners were gonna make a trail through there for their own use. That's what I was inquiring about.
No, that's.
Thank you.
You know, you should point out, Jason, that you cleaned up where the fire cistern was gonna be. Because that was in a, a part of the Conservation Trust fifty foot right away.
Yes, yeah. So the, the new cistern area, right, it moved over here so that it can be accessed from Irving Road. So if there's a fire anywhere in the area, they can pull it off, fill up the tank and then head out without coming into the first light way to, to hook into the easement. So, yeah, I think, geez, I thought it was there on the final plan, but maybe we did end up moving it for this plan.
No, I think you just eliminated the conservation easement that was there, Jason. It was there, it was on there on the last plan.
Yeah, yeah.
Anybody else have any questions for Joan? Anybody else have any questions for Jason?
It seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I'd tell you if I was trying to put one more on you, but this one's pretty, this one's pretty straight.
Yeah, it essentially, the old way, made us landlocked. So this just kind of eliminates that issue.
Joan?
Yes, Marty?
Question with the conservation trails, where's, if, if and when it does happen, where's everybody gonna park?
Well, what we envision in talking to, to the landowner is that to begin with, it'd be, I can't point. Jason, can you point to where we talked about? There would be a little path in by the, on the cistern and with probably room for maybe two or three cars, not, not very many. And then in the long term, meaning more like the three to five year, we might be able to create more parking on the, on the further section in there that we'd come in and maybe have a little bit more parking. But for the beginning, it would be at the cistern end, and travel down that little strip because that's mainly uplands anyway. So two to three parking spaces to start. And then in the long term, maybe a little bit more on the other section, the, the, the longer section of frontage. Sort of like what we have at Welsh Woods now would be the initial thought, except it, it would be in behind the cistern off the, off the, wouldn't be on the road.
May I ask why it's not on the plans then, if that's your thought?
Yeah, sure. So we depending on, they're, they're gonna go out and do their research, I think, I think they'd like to have some flexibility on where they, they cut in the parking. And we're not talking about a paved parking lot here. I'm sure you've seen trailhead parking. It'll probably end up being like, like Joan was saying, two or three head in spaces. And even, and I don't know, even if a conversation with the Public Works Director, if we just make like a gravel shoulder, that's a little longer, where you can, you can parallel park two to three cars in and get, so they can open their door. Can, if you can imagine, you know where the eastern trail parking is on Limerick? I'm thinking something like that might work, but that would be, you know, that parking's.
I think the point is that it's, it's down the line. We're really not sure what is best and we would probably well, end up coming to talk to you about it before we were able to do anything. So we just wanted to be able to have a cut there at some point. And the easement, as it stood, didn't allow us to do that.
It, it actually technically didn't allow us to remove trees to put the cistern in either.
Any, any more comments, questions? Jason, if you could release the, the screen sharing.
Release the cracking.
Yep. Thank you.
I move that we accept the amendment as written.
I'll second.
Motion by Susan Sinnet, seconded by Tom McGinn to accept the amendment as written. Any discussion? Hearing none. Tom?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Susan Sinnet?
Aye.
Marty? Susan Roth?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, before, it's great we're moving through this fast. Before we move on though, I don't know that you need to necessarily read it all, but is that including acceptance of the, of the findings of fact for the amendment that you should have as part of your packet?
Right, because we initially read the findings of fact when we approved it in the beginning.
Correct. And this is, this is an amendment to the plan, so.
Right, so we have to, hopefully, we only have to read the amendment if we have to read anything.
Right. And I'll tell you, most, almost every single one of the lines within the findings of fact are not applicable because most of it is not applicable. But just so you know, you'll need to, you know, come in and you'll need to accept it as part of your approval and then, of course, sign them so that the trust in us will have a record of that. I just want to make sure it's on the record that that's part of the approval.
Because in honesty, the only thing that's changing is the amendment. All the other findings of facts are exactly what we've read through and approved in the first place.
Correct.
Correct. And, and the copy that, the copy that we have has already been signed because this was the original copy.
Lee J, you should, that we should have a vote on that, on finding the fact?
I don't think you need to have a vote on it, but you will, you'll, we will need to have you come in and sign it or have Rich send it out for electronic signing. It's, I, I have it here and it's all, you know, basically not applicable, but it's part of the record.
Okay. Yeah, if you, if you'll send that over to me, I'll get it sent out for signature.
Will do. Thank you.
Next item on you.
Do we, do we also need to stop by and sign the plan?
Yeah.
Yes.
So we have to do both electronically and.
No, we could.
One or the other.
Hook it on, hook it up with the plan. We'll just come in and sign it, get everything at the same time.
We'll sign them both.
Yep, right.
You.
I'm sorry. I said, I will, I don't take care of that. Ann will, she's my boss.
Yes.
She will make sure that everything's ready for you to sign.
And she'll send out a memo and everybody go in and sign.
Absolutely.
Don't, don't be like me. I didn't get in there until we had to sign something and I got in there on March first to sign it. Okay, next item, Arundel Racket Center map thirty-six lot eighteen in the D B one, D B two district. This is a conditional use sketch plan. It's an application for a sixty thousand square foot commercial recreational facility. This project consists of a two-story clubhouse, including six indoor tennis courts and a center clubhouse. Danielle Dignan, did I say that correctly? And Dan?
Zychus.
Zychus?
Zychus.
Zychus. Of River Road Arundel LLC are the owners and applicants. And Jason Baffietti's P E of Atlantic Resource Consultants is the applicant's agent. Take it away, Jason.
Hello, everybody. I hope you're not getting sick of me yet. So Jason Vafias, Resource Consultants here on behalf of Dan, I'm not gonna brutalize your name, I'm not even gonna attempt it. Dan and Danielle, and we have a plane buck on with us who is part of the project team. Yeah, so this is actually pretty excited to bring this to you. This is a sixty thousand square foot racket club. And if I have the screen share, I do bring up this plan. So this property is, uh, excuse me, my notes are on a different screen. About, I think, eighteen acres, where is that? A fifteen acre property. And you're probably all very familiar with it. This is Route one right here. And this is the intersection of Limerick Road and River Road. And down here is, I forget the name of it, Vinegar Hill, I believe.
Yep. Yep.
Down in this area. And then this is the undeveloped lot that sits on that corner, kitty cornered, both Route one frontage and River Road frontage. The property is bisected by its own line. The, the infamous downtown business one zone is the three hundred foot setback off of Route one and River Road. And the downtown business two zone is the remainder of the parcel up through here. And we, because of the, the, the mass of this building structure, we didn't think it probably would sit well. Was a whole bunch of reasons. What, one of being, this is a little bit wet through here. The parcel has, does have some wetlands. And as, if you recall, I'm sure you've all driven by, the parcel sort of rises up into the back. So we've, we've cited this structure, sixty thousand square foot footprint, which is not a small building. And we've set it right sort of where it's flattest in even grade up at the top. We did give you some sketch plans of the footprint of these buildings. We do show the tennis courts on the site civil plan here. And then the middle clubhouse would have a number of amenities that were described in the application. I will let Dan and Danielle answer any questions you may have about that. But we are gonna get as many utilities as we can. We have public water out here on River Road. We will bring up both for fire protection and, and just general service, water service for the parcel. Underground power, we plan on bringing primary underground up to the site. Three phase and the parking. So the parking. So, excuse me, I'll go back to the septic. So we are going to need a private septic system, no sewer in Arundel yet. We've identified a really good area that can take a lot of septic flow over here down to the south of the parking works well for gravity. We won't need any pumps or anything fancy like that. Sort of wind the road up into the top of the hill, the structure. We fit as many parking spaces as Dan and Danielle think they need. I believe we do exceed your ordinance for the number of spaces required for a facility of this type. I have to research that a little bit because there wasn't a great mapping of a use to this site. Fire protection, we are aware that the fire chief is gonna want access probably to all sides of the structure. Given the fact that we're putting in quite a bit of impervious area, two, seven acres. I'm gonna see if I can convince the chief to go with some sort of reinforced turf alleyway structure. These are pretty common. We use these a lot in hospitals or other areas where we put a full gravel base down and then we put reinforced turf instead of pavement on the top of it. And then we delineate it usually with fencing or, or, or it's sort of other ways where they know it's a fire lane access. And then he can drive all the way around, get into this far into the parking area and drive the way out. He'll never have to put his vehicle in reverse if he doesn't need to. He just come in, out and go around. And I think that's, that's basically it. That's what we have right now for a sketch plan. Certainly very interested to hear your input on this proposed use and, and the design and look forward to working with you through all the site plan process.
Oh, I think it's terrible, Jason. Do you know how close this is to Holy Donut?
Well, you know, the, 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 I noticed that Holy Donut pops up a lot right next to gyms, much to my dismay.
I think it's part of their marketing strategy.
Probably, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, just as, just as a follow up to Jason's presentation, the board should be aware that we have already sent the plans that we have to both fire and DPW for their review, and they have provided preliminary comments already to Jason. So he's got some information that he knows he'll need to start addressing as he prepares the plans for submission.
Thank you.
As that goes, Jason, have, have you talked to the chief about, the fire chief about that fire road going around the back?
So I haven't had a specific conversation about, he's comfortable with the, with the cover type. I guess as he will be, so his initial comments and, and Lee J, it may be because I, I, I'm doing so much in Arundel that I'm confusing this with another project. But I think he, he replied that he didn't have any comments at this time and it looked sufficient. But obviously, you know, we're sketching, so we'll get all that before we see you again with the formal supplemental.
Yeah, I believe a bulk of the comments actually came from the Public Works Director regarding stormwater drainage and the, the drive access in. So, yes.
Those, those I could deal with, yeah.
Jason, I'm curious from looking at the, all the, the images and such you sent us, I'm looking at this, what is the relation to Vinegar Hill's entrance to where the proposed entrance is to here? To their parking lot, which is adjacent to that?
Yes, I might show you better this aerial.
That's the one I'm looking at, but I'm just saying where, on that, where would the entrance for the drive be?
It's, it's, it's a good three hundred feet away.
Jason, I have a question related to Susan's question, and that is only one way in and one way out? Is that because of wetlands or because you've got a lot of parking there?
Yep, yep. So we, it is a full commercial drive, Susan. So, and I don't know that your, this requires multiple entrances on commercial uses. Am I, am I missing that somewhere?
No.
The commercial drive, meaning how wide? I'm just curious for my curiosity.
I believe it's twenty-six feet, what we would call curb to curb, but there's no curbing.
That's plenty of room for two cars.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You have to go in and out.
Yeah, you, you could have a vehicle breakdown and still get two vehicles passable.
It's an exciting project. Is it gonna be a private club? Or is it, can you go in as a member of the public and rent a court and stay for lunch or whatever? Do you know?
I am gonna, I'm gonna turn that to, over to, to Dan and Danielle and let them answer that question.
I'll let Danielle do it. Okay. Hi, thank you, Susan. I will answer your question. I'll just take a second just to introduce myself. I'm Danielle Dignan. My husband Dan, I can just get out in the open how to pronounce his name properly right now for everybody's benefit. It's like the you say righteous, but you changed the R for a Z. I say this a lot because my children also have the same last name. So my husband Dan and I are the owners of the property and the project. We live in Cape Purpose with our two children. And we're really excited to be presenting this to you. So thank you, Jason, and thank you to all of you for taking a look at it. And to answer your question, Susan, we would like this to be accessible to anybody who would like to come and play tennis or pickleball. So, you know, we want the community to use it. We want hopefully to provide a place for school teams to be able to practice, which we understand there really is a lack of. So anyone walking in the door should be able to, will be able to play a racket sport, either tennis or pickleball or any other ones we can come up with.
I think it's a great idea and a great use of the lot. So it's, it's an exciting activity to be able to have it in Arundel, I think. So.
Is, is it going to be sprinkled for fire suppression?
Yes, I believe the state fire codes and NFPA require a building of that size to be sprinkled with that occupancy.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair. So Jason, you had mentioned, either you mentioned or is in some of your, some of your submittal that you're gonna keep some of the property open for future development upfront? Would, was that? Is that an option?
Yeah, so, so we, we just, part of the sighting of this building is to allow for potential expansion. So perhaps at a, at a future time, if things are going well, there would be outdoor amenities up in this area. And we, I would be, you know, not representing my client's best interest if we also were not considering that they do have some very valuable frontage down in this area where potentially it could be accessory uses or, or, you know, further, further sort of development. So that's kind of, this building is cited with the future in mind. And I think that's really the point of that, that comment that's in our application packet is that we've thought out maybe five, ten years in advance, but we're really trying to keep this, you know, to, to very, you know, chewable cuts, cuts at it, at, at the.
What's the lot coverage percentage as shown? I think.
Eve, we have that.
And I guess a question for Rich and Lee J is it, what is, what's the allowable percentage?
Yeah.
Like sixty percent, is it?
So, yeah, so Tom, I got it right here. So the lot coverage is seventy percent and we're only at sixteen point seven.
So you have plenty of room for.
Yeah, yeah. These, but these, the DB one and DB two are actually very aggressive, dense zoning when it comes to lot coverage and use, so.
Thanks.
And, and certainly they're not gonna get there, Tom, because of the amount of wetland unless they're ready to go for some major Army Corps of Engineering fill permits and whatnot, so you know, I think even if they have a future development out front, I think it will probably be a small footprint of something and you're not gonna see probably more than thirty or forty percent lot coverage by the time they're done.
There is that, that prime spot right up front in the corner there, though.
Yeah, it's a great corner.
Sure is.
And it was sitting there for a long time. It was like the stepsister, the ugly stepsister, but I think it's interesting. I, I don't have any other questions.
I do. Your dog stopped barking, so now I can ask the question. I'm sorry. I'm sure that this is, I know that we're just at the sketch level and I'm sure it's in there and I'm sure that we'll be seeing it, but like ADA aspects of it, entrance wise, is it, is it a ramp surface? Is it a flat surface? Is it those kind of things since we're talking about it being open to the general public and being used for all?
No, those are sharp eyes, Sue. So, yeah, no, they, they'll be full ADA required. I believe we need four percent of our spaces, the ADA accessible, so those will be right up at the front. And there'll be, I think we're gonna have four, you know, two van accessible to, to standard ADA spaces. And actually, one thing I did mention, which we haven't had time to sort of flesh out is that there will be a pretty robust planting landscape plan, but it goes to this, you know, this, this building is when you see the elevations, I think, you know, when those come in next time, you'll be pretty impressed, but it is a, it is a large building, you know, the, the height that has to, we have to achieve, you know, to play tennis is pretty tall, so we'll, we'll have a, a nice landscaping plan. This whole front courtyard will look really nice.
Jason, since Rich's back was too me, as part of your stormwater, the amount of wetlands and whatnot that you have there and the plantings that you're talking about, are you going to try to incorporate any LID standards, any of your ponds being LID type of ponds?
Yes.
Rather than traditional stormwater ponds?
So I, unfortunately, so the way we have it designed now, and I'm not saying that isn't gonna change, is that we're gonna have a stormwater structure down here and we're looking at different types. Based on the amount of runoff that we're gonna get there, the most effective use would be a wet pond, but I, I personally, they're my least favorite type, but I figured out a way to make them a little more attractive, and so we would, if that came in, you could be assured that, you know, a lot of times we put fountains in them, just, just for, you know, for oxid, oxidizing the water, getting, you know, so you get better water quality in there. It actually makes it something that, nice to look at, so we're still, we haven't cracked that not completely, but we, we would, we have to be chapter five hundred standards, so I think technically all of their BMPs are, are, you know, qualify as, you know, low impact development.
Perfect.
So we, we will need, so just so you know, we're gonna need a MDP stormwater permit for this project as well as a tier one NERPA wetland alteration permit, so, and those permits are can't make promises to my clients, I can't keep, but those, those actually are ready to go in next week, so we anticipate having our state permit submitted next week. That is gonna be a ninety day turnaround, so expect us back into you guys pretty quick because we're, you know, we're, we're excited about getting a, a building schedule that, you know, we could get a foundation in, you know, before snow flies.
I have another question. I'm sorry to be a thing, but when I'm looking at your first floor plan A one oh one, you have plenty of exits for, to get out, but how are you planning on getting on your plan again? I know it's set sketch plan, but there's no paths, there's no way to get to the front, to the back, to the round. If you get out on the side, how, again, as we're talking about people that'll be utilizing it, would we get to something that would be as an exit?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to hire you to come in and review plans, Susan. So, yeah, no. All those with, I'm not a landscape architect, so I look at the big stuff, at the small stuff, so, yeah, we'll have paths connecting all that and and obviously
I'm your resident special ed person. That's why I'm like, oh, okay, how will they get out if they get in with a wheelchair? How will they get out? And so I'm looking again at the back of your building, you have your, on the side, which makes total sense because they are courts. What's in between each one? Are they gonna be netting? Are they gonna be, what will be in, if I'm in court two and court five and something occurs and I need to get out, how will I do that?
I'm gonna kick that over to, so they all have doors, see here, but
The second middle ones do not.
Oh, that's a good point. Yep, that's probably an architect question. Dan and Danielle may have a, a good idea on that.
Yeah, well, I can just tell you, I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna know the fire codes, but I can tell you that between the courts are curtains that will hang from this thing, but that have openings, you know, easy to open. And then in the back, it is a walkway.
Again, I wasn't questioning the ability. I was just saying, looking at the way that it was written, there's plenty of exits. I'm just saying, like, how would you get as construction wise, again, this is sketch plan, from if it's curtains, you can easily get through from court two, to the back, to the side, exit to the middle. I'm just curious how it was, again, it was more for my point of view of like, and, and fire code or not, I'm just curious how you'd get from the middle to the out. But that makes sense. If it's just curtains, you just
Yeah, you, and generally you'd walk behind the course, and for example, if somebody's playing on court you can just walk behind, and then the curtains, the only purpose they really serve is to keep balls from going on the next court.
Okay, thank you, because again, some, some are built with walls, so I was just curious how it was.
These are curtains you can open and close in case you wanna have all the courts open to each other for some reason.
Okay.
Alright, for tournament play or something like that.
Right, right, or clinics.
When, when I look at the first map, Jason, it appears as if you've got a hundred and eighty seven different parking spaces out there. It's probably a slight exaggeration, but it, it, it appears to be that there's a number of parking spaces. And I'm wondering, do you anticipate having all of those spaces full at some point?
There's a tournament, you could.
Then you need to have, then you're gonna have a trip generation issue. And you may need to do a traffic study.
Yeah, yeah, and so traffic is the voodoo engine, so typically a traffic study doesn't include, based on the the traffic generation, the standards that are, that are, that the, the US DOT uses. That's the, escaping me now with the
ITE, Institute of Traffic Engineering?
I, I T manual, so Rich, you're right, like, say we're doing a, you know, a ten PM or it's a ten PM, it shows you, I'm a night owl, a ten AM extravaganza or something, you would, at that, for that special event, you would, you, you would probably trip a hundred peak, peak trips in, in and out, especially if people are dropping off. And I, I will provide you with certainly a narrative on, you know, procedures and things like that. I think as a, a standalone general business day use, we will not trip a hundred people or trips. But certainly, we would provide you guys with a traffic memo generated by, not me, but by a traffic engineer.
Okay, thank you.
Is there an elevator planned or anything in it or just stairs to the second floor?
Yeah, I'll let Dan and Danielle answer that.
Yeah, there is currently an elevator drawn into the plans, and it was our understanding that that would be a requirement for ADA and accessibility to the second floor. It's right behind the, in the lobby, it says tennis and office. You go down a little more, yeah, right behind, above tennis is drawn an elevator below the kitchen.
Gotcha. So the second floor, it's up, it's behind your conference and near the other offices on the second floor plan too.
Right.
Okay, thank you. I was curious if that's what that was, just wasn't legend. So you might wanna add that to the legend.
Yeah. And we should just point out that this layout is, is fluid and probably not exactly how we will have the amenities laid out. We were just kind of coming up with some placeholders, but generally it would look like this.
What I'm saying, as, as it's labeled, then I can, I wouldn't have to ask the question.
In fact, I was looking for it earlier and couldn't find it either, so you're right, it, it doesn't need to be labeled.
Very cool.
Does anybody else?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, if anyone has any input or, or anything that I know it's hard for you to know at this point, but anything that might steer our finishing up the design, we'd be more than happy to hear it.
I'm not enough of an architect to interfere with anyone's design concepts.
Oh, come on. You've ripped apart some of my site plans. You don't have any
No, that, that's different than an architecture, though. Well, thank you very much. Look forward to seeing how this progresses.
Thank you.
Thank you. Exciting, looks good.
Thanks, everybody. We'll see you soon.
Great.
Right, alright.
Thanks very much. Bye.
We'll release the
Yep, all set.
Thank you. There we go, okay. There is something that we forgot to put on the agenda. The amendment to the subdivision does not require town meeting.
That is correct.
That is something that we as a board will vote on.
That is correct.
We just didn't stick it on the agenda to have that vote.
Sure, we can do that for the next meeting.
Yep.
Since it's not going anywhere else, it's, it's not pressing, but certainly we can get it changed at the next, through the next meeting.
Yeah, it's, it's up to you now with the street design and construction ordinance.
Yes, I need to find my part of that package, but so since I've been with you folks, it's now, believe it or not, coming on almost a year that I've, I've been working for the town. And one of the things that I found was that while I was trying to put everything together, we were getting somewhat inundated with requests for this, for the whole private street issue and going, how, how to handle it and having to have the staff review. I don't know how many of you realize the process, but if someone wants to have a private, well, most roads, all roads in town basically are private. But if it's a family type of subdivision, or there's a couple of lots that someone wants to put in, it doesn't require going to the planning board to you folks for subdivision review, then putting in a private road, folks are still required to come to the staff review level, which is code enforcement officer, the tax assessor, myself, public works director and the fire department. And they need to prepare a plan, an engineered plan and stormwater, if there's any stormwater impacts, and go through a public hearing process. Just as though they were coming to you folks for a review and approval. And what I found was that while it's important that review is done on that and that they meet certain standards, which are in the street design construction standards section of the ordinance, which is not part of the zoning ordinance. It's a very cumbersome process. And in some cases, not all cases, but in some cases, it's kind of difficult for folks, you know, it's, it's costly and having folks go through and spend a lot of money to, especially if a street is or a drive is already in existence. And in many cases, has already been built to a, a pretty substantial standard that they're going through and spending a lot of money and a lot of time and a lot of staff time and energy to review and get that approved. And so I thought about it a lot. I talked with Roger Tashero, I talked with, with Jim Nagel a lot. And I said, there's gotta be something we can do to ease a little bit of that burden, both on the applicant and on us as staff. And because it's very, it, it, it's very labor intensive for us to, you know, put together a public hearing notification, go out on the site, do a site review, come back, have a, have a public hearing, prepare findings of fact, it's, it's everything like we do for you folks, but it's just for a drive access. And so I ran a couple of different drafts by the select board. I don't wanna get too deep into the issues, but as understanding that the select board was the prime architect, if you will, of this whole thing, I wanted to run it by them first and ran it by the manager as well. And after about four drafts or five drafts of wording, some of which they, they didn't like, I came up with, with the proposed wording that we're looking to do. And the reason I'm bringing this all to you is because the last page of this, this ordinance, although it's a standalone ordinance, says that the planning board needs to hold a public hearing on any amendments to this ordinance. So I wanted to bring it to you and introduce it at this point. But it has gotten the blessing, if you will, from the select board at this point. But we wanted to change two point five one, which is the staff review committee approval process. And I'm proposing to add language in there that says if a road or a drive has been previously constructed and the applicant seeks to obtain approval under two through ten exempt lot provisions in article two, section two point three of this ordinance, then the applicant shall request the staff review committee to visit the site and determine if the road meets the required standards. If it can be demonstrated, no further permitting is required. And that's simply for us to go out, look at it, make sure it meets the width requirements, that it looks like it's going to stand up to weather situations, like it's not a mud hole or it's really, you know, pothole driven in, in, in poor gravel, and then it's got proper site distances. But for us to go out and meet and do a walkthrough and look at it, if we still feel that they need to do something more, then they're gonna have to come back through us like they would anyway. But if, if, if we look at it and we go, yes, you know, we feel confident that this meets the process, the, the, the design standard that was already put in place, then they don't have to go any further. I think it's gonna cut down to some extent on the amount of process that we do internally for some of these streets. And there are some other minor amendments that we, that I threw in there under two point seven two, which is private way certification. When they need the road certified that it meets the standard. It's, I'm, I'm adding or proposing to add that let's see, prior to the issuance of a build, of building permits, the public works director or designate, and here's where I add, may ask the applicant to retain an engineer in order to certify the road has been constructed to the standards of article two, two point three of the street design construction standards ordinance. Otherwise, the public works director or their designate shall certify the private road has been constructed. So if there's a chance that we feel, for example, that you know, we really need to know, what are the compaction rates out there? Is the road been really built this way, the way it needs to be done, and we're not sure? We may require them to still retain an engineer and go out and get some central line borings of that road and tell us what the subbase and the base gravel construction is of that road. Or if the public works director feels confident that that road was built to a standard that will withstand, you know, the, the drive access, he can certify it if he feels comfortable. And he didn't have a problem with us putting that burden on And he didn't have a problem with us putting that burden on him. But understand, these are, these are private. Regardless, you know, they're they're not roads or drive accesses that are going to be maintained by the town. Other than the fact that we need to make sure that public safety vehicles especially can get in and out of there in an emergency situation. So I wanted to bring this forward to you at this point. We it's not a public hearing on it yet, but I wanted to introduce it to you and let you know that based on the other portion of the ordinance, basically, it says you folks have to have a public hearing on it before it goes to town meeting for adoption. So that's where I'm at with it. Try to answer any questions you folks have. I think again, the the select board seemed pretty comfortable with with this proposal as it is. Town manager seemed comfortable with this proposal as it is. And all the parties involved have also looked at it. So that's where we're at right now.
I'm curious why you didn't bring it to us before you brought it to everybody else.
I brought it to to everybody else first, simply because one, there are other parties involved. And again, it was my understanding, being new and trying to understand the dynamics of everything, it was my understanding that this this ordinance was crafted by the select board. And and so I wanted to make sure that they were on board with anything that I'm trying to do before anybody else.
This this ordinance was crafted by this by the public works department and the board of selectmen. They wanted input from the from the planning board, and as soon as we showed up, we were promptly ignored and dismissed.
Are you talking about 2.51 right now?
2.5, the entire pro- the entire street design ordinance.
He's also talking about 2.7. He's talked about two different things. So I just want to clarify what he's talking about.
Yeah, well, the the entire thing was developed by the the selectman and the public works department.
Correct.
I I question, I I think that 251, I think the last statement is is very close to being redundant to everything else that is in there. You know, if it can be demonstrated, no further action is required. My first thought was if what can be demonstrated?
Okay, so I, yeah, I will add a little bit to that to clear.
I just, I thought it could be combined with the last statement for a little clarification.
Okay, thank you.
When it comes to 272, I have no comment. I made all of my comments a long time ago.
I understand.
The chair.
The thing is, there's people that weren't there a long time ago. So if you don't make comments, I don't know what you're talking about.
I'll make comments at the public hearing. Paul?
I can tell you that having lived through this whole process over the last year and a half. In fact, that's what ended up getting me coming to all these meetings. Because I didn't know that this board didn't do it, that the committee did. It was painful as hell trying to get in and put a private road in what I considered was my driveway for years. It was miserable trying to get through only not so much building the road, which we're doing now, but actually understanding the process to go get it built. It wasn't easy. I think this hopefully will clarify it and make it easier for the person who's trying to get it done. It was, it was tough and and you know, your predecessor was not easy to get answers out of. So everything was a guessing game. I got a little bit at a time, and it took me almost a year to get the process done to build my damn driveway.
So that's that's my question is like the difference between a driveway and a road. Because you were saying you've created.
Now called it, oh, it was a driveway with two houses. So Susan, when I built the house 30 years ago, it was a driveway for two houses. 911 came along, it became a private way because we had to number the two houses that were back here. And now that we're putting my three kids all back and I'm extending the road, I had to go through this process, which is all well and good. I had no issues complying with anything except that you couldn't understand it and you couldn't get answers. It took me a year to get there. We finally got it. And that's with hiring an engineer.
So that was my question before you interrupted me for a second is understanding what the difference between a road and a private drive, a long drive is. I'm like that. Is that what your committee does when you go out and to look at it?
Is because No, we don't do, we don't really, I, we don't really determine between a road and a private drive. Everything that is not a state aid road or a town maintained road is a private drive in town or a private road. I mean, it's interchangeable wording. But it's every, everything is private beyond stated or town ways that are currently maintained by the town.
Lee J, Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I I think it's a driveway when it's only one house on the road. And Paul, did it change when it was two houses on the road? Is that what happened?
We were two houses originally. And after we were here about, I don't know, maybe five, seven years, 911 system went into place and we had to name our driveway. And they gave us each house numbers. We used to be part of Liberty Acres, and back then it was Oak Street. They renamed Oak Street as Liberty Acres, and then they named my driveway as, well, we picked out the name as Porcupine Lane.
Right, but if it had only been your house on that road, not the second house, this wouldn't have happened, Susan. So the fact that there were two houses.
Acres. Well, you know, you say that, but there, right next door to me, there's a long driveway with three houses off of it. And they're not a private drive. They're all on Liberty Acres.
Well, don't ask me about that.
I'm not sure anymore how that works.
But Lee J, I'm sure this is not the first of many instances as you spend your retirement looking over our ordinances where
Retirement? I'll never be retired.
Yeah. But you know, there's a lot I think that needs to be either A cleaned up or B that's redundant. And you know, as we go through it and you stumble on it, you know, we'll just take care of it.
Yeah, so yeah, no, thank you. You know, I mean, I can tell you that I I don't know if it goes far enough to answer Susan, some of Susan's questions. But for example, if you're on a private way, private road, private drive, whatever you want to call it. If within this ordinance, there's a table that talks about exempt and non exempt two to 10 lots. Exempt lots are basically family subdivisions. So I've lived there for five years and I want to chop off a couple of lots for my children. Those are exempt lots on a private drive or a private road. And then you can go up to 10 of those, either exempt or non exempt and have to meet this certain road standards. It's a very, quite honestly, it's very complicated and I'm trying to make it less complicated without compromising the regulation.
Yep.
So to move to 2.72, what is original and what is new? Because you've got two different colors going on in there.
When you say what is original, do you mean for wording for language?
Yeah. In other words, what was the original language that was there? Or is it all changed with the two different colors?
Well, since you, yeah, you see two different colors, all of the, all of the language that is underlined, which are the two colors, blue or red.
Yep.
That is all proposed wording. The other wording that's there was the existing wording. So it would have originally read, prior to the issuance of of building permits, the public works director or designate in order to, in in order oh, here, let me read it out of the ordinance because
I'm trying to read it as you did, as you did. And I was like, that doesn't make any sense.
So the original wording really said prior to the issuance of building permits, the public works director or designate shall certify that the private way has been constructed in accordance with approved plans and design performance standards in this section.
So in order should be underlined.
I'm sorry, Tom, in order?
Should should be underlined.
Okay, yeah, I can take care of that. As new wording.
Yeah.
Yep.
Susan, to address your question of driveways and private ways, driveways by our standards and our definition serve two houses or less. And they don't have a particular width. Private ways are inside a 50 foot right of way, and they are built to a specific standard. Driveways are not.
Yes, correct.
So again, the one at the top front, and so staff review and committee process, the only thing that we you're going to be doing is seeing if the road is or drive has been previously constructed to those standards.
Correct.
Versus bring it to us for approval. Within that committee.
It it doesn't come to you now. They don't come to you now.
I know, but I'm just saying like, not that way. I'm just saying like that, what you're doing is just saying basically to kind of ease it. You've already done it, and then you go from there. Versus it being another.
Yeah, trying to make the process less onerous. Because right now I've been involved with some of those staff reviews and it's got so many levels of meetings and paperwork. It really got to be a bit much. And if you can cut through some of it because it's redundant, it would be great.
Well, that's what we're trying to do. How it works, once we put it into play, I don't know, but
And this new wording too, will give the public works director a little bit of a tool saying, hey, if he's not really sure, he can require you to go get an engineer to certify it.
Right.
That wording wasn't there before.
That language that was originally in there was per the public works director. He's the one who put it. He wanted, he wanted the authority to do it without having any engineer at all review anything.
Yep. Yep, no, and and I've run this all by him and he's comfortable with where we're at.
Well, it also states he, right now, he doesn't say he has to ask for an engineer either. It says may ask. So it doesn't necessarily, it's still giving him that.
Right, it gives him a tool. Right, right now, it doesn't say anything at all about an engineer. It says he he shall certify.
Right.
That the private way has been constructed. So he's going to look at it and say, yeah, that was built to the right standard without having any knowledge of it.
Or he could say, no, I don't believe it was. But if there's no option for a third party, if you will, for an engineer to come in and say yes or no, it was. It's either up or down.
I had a question about that. It just gives all the the option only in in the hands of the public works director or designate. If if there was a disagreement, does a homeowner have the option to do that? It doesn't really allow.
Tom. This is still gives all the power to the that to the public works person or the designate doesn't take that.
Could it say the that may we, may, let's see.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
An engineer may be retained rather than may ask the applicant. Because this is only, this doesn't give any, any option for the applicant at all.
So in the event of a dispute, Lee J, or a difference of opinion between the public works director and a resident or residents, Tom's right, there's no re- doesn't seem to be any recourse built in.
There is recourse. You can go to the code and for, not the zoning board of appeals.
ZBA.
Right, so well, there, hold on, hold on.
Not go that far.
One of the order, please. I can't understand you all talking at the same time.
Hold on. So there are appeals process in this ordinance. And it says decision of the staff review committee regarding private way applications may be appealed to the Arundel Zoning Board of Appeals within 30 days of the date of the decision or directly to Superior Court within 30 days from the this dated decision. So they have two paths that they could appeal in that respect. And then there's also 4.2 appeals of the planning board. Any aggrieved party may appeal the decision of the planning board under these regulations because there are times that something will come to you. Appeal directly to York County Superior Court within 30 days of the decision. And then any aggrieved party may appeal the decision of the board of selectmen under these regulations to Superior Court. So there are a number of appeals process. I do hear what Tom's saying, and what I can build in is some wording that would suggest that the applicant could retain in the turn the engineer on their own to provide adequate information to the construction of the plan. I cleaned it up a little bit, but I can add that into 2.72.
I think that'd be a good idea. Rather than, I know there are the appeal avenues and Superior Court, but we're trying to make this easier for the applicant, not more hurdles to jump over.
Yeah, no, I think that's a, that's a great, great suggestion, and I can build some wording into that to to allow for an applicant to retain their own engineer and provide that information.
Good.
Yep.
Other than that, I think it's a good idea.
All right. Well, let me clean this wording up and I will get it back to you. I'm assuming fairly soon because it means to have a public hearing with you folks and then go on to the select board. So and I miss, I would assume town meeting.
So we should be looking at a public hearing on April 19.
Okay.
Yeah, after that, it won't be enough time to get it printed and in the warrant.
Right, I'll I'll have that cleaned up. Not a problem. Yep. Um. Other than that, I mean, I think we still have, you you know, it's an ebb and flow right now for for you folks. We have some projects that are going to be coming back. The applicant applicants of those projects are redoing or developing their plans. So you know, right now it's a, it's a down period, but I think we're going to be getting inundated again. We've got the Emily Way subdivision that you're going to be doing a site walk on the 19th, I believe it is. And so they can't move forward yet. We still have Strickland Lane project out there waiting for them to adjust stormwater. We have Jason's, one another one of Jason's projects. Oh, um. Irving Road, the three lot Irving Road subdivision needs to come back to you folks and you will be seeing at the next meeting, the only thing we have on the agenda is a sketch for Crossroads South, Crossroads North, excuse me, which is coming back under a new design to you.
So we don't have a site walk next meeting for next meeting is the one, the one following it?
Yeah, I believe it's the 19th.
Yeah, I think it was. I'm pretty sure it was.
Yeah. And of course, we're we're still waiting on the final plan for Goff Brook. So you've got, you've got a bunch of projects in the pipeline. They're just at different stages and as soon as folks are ready to go, we'll be gearing back up for a lot of, lot of review.
Are we waiting for Paul Gad Boys to come back also? Was that Helen's way? Is that, or is it Emily's way?
Well, it was Emily. Emily was the na- Emily was the name of the applicant. I think it is Helen's way. And yes, he won't be coming back though until after we do our site walk, I believe, which is the 19th.
Right.
What about the guys up on Enterprise Drive? Have you heard anything back on them?
I have not.
Yeah, we've got a bunch of stuff that from the last meeting that's still out there.
Yeah, yeah. So we're just in that little ebb and flow period where things are quiet, but they'll be picking up. That's all I have.
So shall I move that we adjourn?
One more.
Okay.
I had a discussion with the town manager today. He wants to know when we're going to go back to meeting face to face. And I told him that when the hospital count gets below 100 and stays there, that we will look at at the idea of getting back together. In the meantime, we're going to continue to zoom.
I'm curious why, since we've had so much success, why they're so adamant about it, since people are being happily coming, things are being shown, digitally being able to see better, people be able to be more about it, since people are being happily coming, things are being shown digitally, being able to seen better, people be able to be more inclusive.
Because we're we're a public board and they want the meeting in a public place. And Zoom, they do not consider Zoom to be a public place.
Well, can we uh can we put it on the town warrant that uh it's an option? And see whether or not the town likes being able to meet via Zoom?
She's not joking. I don't know why that wouldn't be a good idea.
I mean, we get much more participation on Zoom. I mean, we've already told them this, but why don't we put it to a vote of the town? If they like it, why not? I mean, the selectmen like meeting in person for whatever reasons we all can come up with, but we get a lot of input from the community at the Zoom meetings, which is what we want.
If you presumably, if if we can put something together for the next meeting on April fifth, then we can hold a a public hearing on the on the nineteenth and forward it as as a as a and a town warrant, and we can forward it to the board of selectmen to include on the warrant.
Lee J.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, um, Rich, probably if if you can come in on Monday, maybe we could sit and talk about that for a few minutes so that we could develop some wording for the April fifth meeting.
Monday might be rough.
Okay. I I just like a little more guidance from from you folks on that. What what we want to have for wording?
Yeah, right.
Well, I mean, the plenty of work. For us, Lee J, is that, you know, we held many public meetings at school where nobody came. And
Right.
Our, we get a lot more input and discussion about things uh and community involvement since we've been meeting on Zoom. And the more people get used to it and the more they like the idea, it seems to be.
Uh, we usually see, uh, you know, two or three people every meeting that are showing up, and we weren't getting people showing up before. I I'm I'd be more than happy to to do it this way. I just wanted to give the town town manager a clue as to when I thought we should be getting back together. And that's one that counts below a hundred and stays that way.
But I would feel comfortable if we could, we could put some wording in and see the town if they approve it or not, because
And ask the community if they like it.
As a person who used to come to them on occasion, um, even in person, as a person who has visual acuity issues, seeing it on a Zoom, I can actually see versus when I'm in the um, the audience, usually the placards facing the people that are looking at it, and then you cannot see what's being discussed or whatever. And then it becomes more of an issue as a public person. If there's a problem, you didn't see what was happening, and therefore you're not involved. So this is makes it more visual for a person again with some visual issues. This would be more accessible. People that have issues with um, again, special needs, this makes it easier for them to take part. So I'd like some wording put in place for not only just inclusiveness for people being in part, but also our town is there's a lot of, as the people that you see in the little boxes that don't even show up on their pictures, some older folks who would not be able to make it to town all come to the meetings because they're still invested in a rundle. So trying to have that inclusiveness part and put it on for the town to vote on, and if the town says no, great, but if they say yes, the selectmen and people can't say, well, we told you so. No, the town wants us to do it this way.
The selectments policy right now leaves it up to me. And it and it, I don't I don't think that's got got anything to do with COVID. It's their their policy and they left it. They their policy specifically says that it's up to the chairman as to whether or not they follow the face to face meeting regulations. So we could very well end up doing this for a long time.
So you've set the time of the hundred hospital.
Yeah, I I'm the I'm the one who picked it out. I'm I'm not in any big hurry to to uh I've I've taken my my entire business down to the fact that it's a home based business and I do most of my stuff through uh remote portals because my wife is not healthy and I don't want to bring anything home.
And I appreciate that I'm saying, but now that you've put that number out there, if that does get attained, you can revisit it. It's your decision, but you've now put that number there as a statement of to um argue or not when it's reached.
It's true.
Well, let's see if you guys can come up with some compelling language to convince. Well, I like it that it's your decision. Um, but even the arguments we just made about more involvement is compelling enough uh to keep meeting on Zoom then, and you don't need an artificial threshold.
That's the most compelling argument that we can have. We get more participation from members of the public when we meet when we meet here than we do when we meet in person.
And I know that you're going to do this forever, Rich, but there might be another person that comes in after a chair that changes their mind to go, you know, I want y'all in person all the time. And I'd rather it be an option.
Susan, I'm going to tell you the same thing I told Chip Bassett a few years ago. He 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 wanted to know if he could be the chairman and he did. And when it came time, somebody nominated him, and I said, you want to be Chip? And he said, sure, why not? So I said, you can have it.
Right, but I'm saying that person might be different perspective than you are.
Oh, and I have no problem with that. I enjoy doing this, but if there's somebody else that wants to do it, I'm more than happy to step back and let them do it.
You're not seeing my point. I'm not happy with the fact that they might say, okay, now we're done with Zoom. And we're going to go there and we would have the wording saying, well, the town wants us to say this way.
So I'll 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 just throw something in for my purpose. Um, we've had this discussion in our office, actually as late as today. Is that, you know, all towns are going to start having to go back to um in person meetings. And um, we are of the opinion that if we can continue to Zoom, um, it saves you folks, all of our towns money because you're paying my travel expenses, at least from Saco to your office and back to Saco again, even though I live you know, a hundred miles away, which I don't care about, but at five dollars a gallon, it's saving you folks in all of our towns money and by doing it this way, because, you know, I'm not charging anybody to go from my office to my house. That's my, that's my expense. But if I'm going from from Saco to your town hall and back through Saco again, you know, you folks are paying for that every meeting, and if we don't have to charge you that, that's that's a savings over time.
Well, and we get more of you too.
I don't know if that's such a good thing, Susan.
Now we get more of you. So all that time, you don't have to spend in the car. You can spend with us.
Exactly.
Think about that.
And I'm sure very much like Jason and all those guys, I mean, every all of the people that are working with things have the same feeling as you do. It's like they appreciate not having to come from Bath, Brunswick, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, and just zoom and be able to show us everything.
Absolutely.
No doubt.
Comment. It has the acoustics been fixed at town hall yet?
No.
Because I will tell you that since we started zooming, I hear everything. I can follow everything. When we're in town hall, I have a hell of a time trying to keep up with things because I can't hear it. It echoes so bad. I I've tried turning up, turning down everything on my hearing aids, and I can't hear a damn thing in there. Everything echoes and it's all muffled. So.
What about you, Tom? What do you have to say on Zoom?
I I like what Paul said. I was thinking the same thing. Not only it be and also Susan sent it said the same thing about seeing and hearing. We it everybody can see everything. As far as transparency goes, it's all right there in front of us. We can see the screen like what Jason was doing, showing it right on screen. It's it's clear, it's easy. You're not uh on the backside or you're not waiting for uh for someone to hand the that that down to you or whatever it is. It's right in front of us. And that goes a long way. Uh, personally, I I like just sitting at home right now and not having to drive home. I'm already home. It's so that that's nice, but that's my own personal thing. But I think it's a whole new paradigm, use that word in the world. Everybody in every type of institution is looking at what do we do now? And I don't see any strong reason to to have to be live. And and we have a a lot of um applicants coming down. It's it's like uh the the metal salvage place on Route One. They're out of Bangor, that 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 their offices are up there, and they have to come down all the way down here for a a one hour meeting, drive all the way back up. There are a lot of applicants like that. So we're saving that they'll like it better. And there's also people who never would go to town hall in in person and sit there. And they might feel awkward or they they can, we have a lot of just phone numbers showing up at the on these little boxes. They can sit there anonymously and just watch the entertainment without saying a word, and that that keeps people informed. We keep getting, we not anymore, but we were blamed for many years of not getting the news out to people. Well, it's so accessible now. I think this is a huge advantage. Everybody knows they can just log on if they want to. It what what's going on on Law Cabin Road with John with Sean Doucens um project? This whenever, and I I wasn't here last time, but there's always three or four or five of the abutters that are just logging on and being part of the meeting, which is great.
And we wouldn't have that. I don't think we'd have that face to face.
Not that much.
Well, it's uncomfortable to come for like a minute. You don't know when it's going to happen, and then you have to stay. Getting up to leave in the middle of a meeting for some people is anxiety ridden versus I can just turn off my computer.
Yeah. And go watch on TV until your issue comes up.
All right, Lee J, sharpen your pencil.
Will do.
How about Marty? What do you think, Marty?
Marty, you muted. You're muted. There you go.
By now on.
Yeah.
Uh, I like the idea. I'm all in favor of it.
Of Zoom?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Even though my computer sometimes works, it don't work, but I mean, the fact is, we've had more positive responses of different people along the way. And even the people who have been criticized of the planning board, they can see it. And it won't be once and it won't be one sided with the select.
We seem to all be on the same page.
Yeah.
I know Jamie go along with it too.
Yeah. I ju I just assumed meet this way because it for any number of reasons. First off, it's just a whole lot easier.
Yeah.
But but the other thing is they're talking about another variance might come out.
It's already out, P A two.
So if if we're doing it this way, we're playing safe for our families.
Yep.
And and we're not losing anything by doing this.
We're we're actually more productive this way than we were when we were meeting in town at the town hall with the library.
Did they get a clock get?
Nancy twenty three.
No, did they get a clock get in the meeting room?
No, I don't think so. They're still trying to debate as to what kind of a clock they want.
Oh, my goodness.
To God.
I'll go to Walmart and get one for three bucks.
You can get you can get a great one like this, big round one, up at Sam's Club for twenty bucks.
Geez Louise.
Hey, on a separate question, do you guys do like an annual uh training session or or anything like that?
We have had in the past, we haven't had one in quite a few years. Um. We keep trying to get Leah to come and put something on and to no avail. Uh, and I don't know if it's that Leah doesn't want to come or that the town doesn't want to cover the legal fees of having her come.
Yeah, they could do it on Zoom. Behind asking Rich is uh I have no clue what you guys have for background. I mean, I've got a Susan now I got today. I know she was a teacher. Now I know she does special ed stuff and handicap.
Still, I'm a teacher. Still, I'm teaching.
What's that?
I still am a teacher and I still.
That's what I'm saying, but you but you also do special ed and and handicap, right?
Yeah, I'm a special ed teacher, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know that. I mean, uh, a lot of I I just, and maybe it's just me because I'm new, but I have no idea what the strengths and weaknesses are of everybody on the board. And I'm just wondering if it would be smart sometime to have a workshop where we can go through what our backgrounds are and figure out who's got what strength, who's good. I mean, some of these questions that come up when people come in. Um, you know, like you asked me if if I have to ask questions about dirt and oh, I have no freaking clue. Now, drawings and buildings? Yeah, I understand that stuff. When it comes to dirt and stuff, I'm learning a lot, which is good, but who on the board has that strength? I don't know that, so I don't know.
Jamie does.
Yeah, okay, so I didn't know that, right? But but that's the kind of thing I'm I'm wondering, would it be worthwhile to do something like that? I don't know.
Having a background in certain things doesn't necessarily give you strength in there, because I mean, as a person who was on a school board for years, elected official, I'm an ordinance nerd and a person who's a special ed person who has to read ordinances every single day. That has nothing to do necessarily with dirt, but I know how to read the ordinance and know what's legal. Do you see what I'm saying? So having a background, it's it's being an interest in the pro in the thing, being interested in the process and being able to read the thing is is the only thing you kind of need to.
I totally understand. I was a new for forty years, building submarines and nuclear power plants and stuff, but you know what? I would have never thought about the handicap question that you asked today. That was excellent, but I wouldn't have thought of that because I haven't had to deal with it. So
Every day.
You know, just a thought.
Point of information.
Yeah, Marty.
Looks like holy donuts is uh they're still working like the devil on it, but I think they ran into more uh work than they expected. I mean, but they're they're still working every day on it.
Good for them.
Lee, you're nodding your head?
I went by today because I went and looked at this lot we were looking at tonight. I wanted to see and I saw where they had all the equipment and people were still there working, so. So I mean, I won't get into it too deep, but I will say that um they have found um a lot more issues with the old restaurant, which is going to become a production facility than they had planned on. Um, it wasn't as easy as going in and um gutting the inside and reestablishing it for a production facility that as they thought. Um, and so they've run into a number of issues that they're now trying to deal with, and I'll I'll leave it at that for for them at this point, but.
I was surprised that the um, the the sketch drawing didn't have because it is having any kind of access to get a coffee from the um bath for the tennis courts. Do you like looking at it? Is it being something to work?
Oh, you mean in access through the site?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would, you know, I mean, that's something certainly to talk about, but um.
I was just supposed to, because I guess you guys brought it up, and I'm like, huh, that could be a good marketing.
That that will develop on its own as people decide to leave the tennis court and go get a coffee and a donut, and they'll just make their own path over, and then they'll come back.
Right, rather than vehicular traffic.
Throw in a bar in there, right? They have a bar also.
If you don't have coffee and donuts, I don't want to go.
Well, let's see what they come back with. Anyway, anyway, I'm sorry. All right, you guys, I gotta run, but.
Okay, that. I'll second that.
All right, I move that we adjourn.
Second in favor.
All right.
We adjourned.
All right, good night, everyone.
Night, everyone.
Good night.
Yeah.